Madam Mayor, recording has begun.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our town council meeting for nineteenth March, two thousand and twenty-four. I would like to officially call this meeting to order at six P. M. Director Fitz, could you please give a roll call?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Mayor James.
Here.
Councilman Winkler.
Present.
Councilman Trolinger.
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Present.
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Would you all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. And I am looking for, if you all have had the opportunity to look at the agenda for this evening, I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we adopt March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to the approval of the minutes for the meeting on March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. If you've had, all have had the opportunity to read it, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes for March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in fa- any questions, any comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Brings us to a public comment. If there's anyone who wishes to come up and speak, I ask that you state your name, whether you live in the incorporated town limits. And if you could limit your comments to three minutes, that would be most appreciated. Do I have anybody who would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, we will go on to our proclamation. We have, we have Maryland Day that is coming up, and I'm going to ask Councilman Trolinger to read this proclamation for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the distinguished heralded traditions of Maryland became, excuse me, began on March twenty-fifth, sixteen thirty-four, as two small sailing vessels, the Ark and the Dove, approached southern Maryland shores and landed on Saint Clement's Island, allowing settlers to disembark on Maryland soil for the first time. And whereas since the arrival of Maryland's first pioneers, great Marylanders such as Thomas Stone, Francis Scott Key, Edgar Allan Poe, Harriet Tubman, and Matthew Henson stand as examples of the greatness inspired by the old line state. Today, our state continues to prosper and build upon the ideals of Maryland's founders and pioneers. And whereas Maryland Day, March twenty-fifth, is a day all Marylanders are encouraged to commemorate by participating in activities designed to celebrate our history and reflect upon the vast and diverse offerings of our state. Now, therefore, we, the council, the town of La Plata, do hereby proclaim March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, as Maryland Day. In the town of La Plata, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens to join in celebrating Maryland's three hundred and ninetieth anniversary. Signed by the council, the town of the player, La Pla- La Pla- La Plata, the mayor, Janine James, David Winkler, councilman, Matthew D. Trolinger, councilman, Evelyn L. Bryant Ward, councilwoman, David M. Jenkins, councilman.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to our next item on our agenda. It's matter of council discussion, and it's the official zoning map. Director Harrington.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So for the official zoning map, the reason that we need to update is because of the three annexations that were brought into the town. The villages of Rosewick, which was zoned N C X, Hawthorne Yards, which was zoned N C X, and the Hub, which was zoned T D X. So due to those, we need to make sure that update our official zoning maps so we can be updated on the G I S and for the public to view. You have any questions?
I do have a question, and thank you very much. If there are any other properties that we are looking at maybe annexing in, in the near future, should this be, I mean, is this a living document that we can update at any time? Or does this have to go through a public hearing?
So it does need a public hearing, which I believe is going to be scheduled next week. So it does require a public hearing, but it can be updated at any time. So we've, I think the last time we updated it was in two thousand and twenty-one, based on the comprehensive plan and some properties that we noticed were zoned incorrectly. So it's kind of something that we take a look at once, at least once a year, to verify if we need to update it or not.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Any questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harrington. So the public hearing is what, with the planning commission first and then the town council?
I believe it's the town council is next week.
Okay.
The planning commission has already reviewed this.
Okay.
Issued their recommendation.
And then once it's quote adopted or after the hearing, then it goes to what? It's to state planning?
So it would go to Charles County, we would share it to the state, and then we'd post it to our website and update our G I S.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Director Harrington, thank you. Just for the benefit of those that are watching or may watch later, could you explain the acronym that you, acronyms that you mentioned of the zoning changes, T D X, for example?
So the zoning categories are listed in the chapter one ninety-one of the town code. So R eight, for example, is residential eight thousand square foot lots. R ten is residential ten thousand square foot lots. R five is residential five thousand square foot lots. R three is residential three thousand square foot lots. You have C H, which is commercial highway. C B, which is central business. C B T, which is central business transition. N C X, which is the neighborhood commercial mixed use zone. T D X, which is the traditional mixed use zone. You have the, what am I forgetting? What am I forgetting? Huh?
Industrial.
Oh, yeah, we have industrial high and we have industrial low. So those are the two on that side. I feel like I'm, oh, yes. And then we have the PUD zone. So there's Hickory Ridge, which is P D A H R. We have AgroCopia, which is P D A G, and we have Steeplechase, which is P D S T.
Okay, thanks. It's planned unit development.
It's planned development. We had the three existing that were kind of solidified in the zoning code as having their own individual guiding documents to, since they were already pre-approved.
Wonderful. And so I am looking for a consensus to move this to legislation. Councilman Winkler?
Sure.
Councilman Trolinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So we'll see in just a little bit. Thank you very much. That brings us to the Siemens Closed Circuit Television Proposal with Director Stahl and Captain Payne. You guys can take the mic down and sit if you'd like, or if you want Mike to be standing up there. There you go. All right.
Mayor, this is a kind of a joint project between operations and the police. We have been working on this for some time. This project has kind of grown from, to be honest, when we originally put in the budget for it, we were planning to just upgrade all of the cameras kind of down in operations because we have some non-functional cameras that are, because of the the data recorders are so far out of date, we can't even get replacement data recorders. And of course, because everything is about fifteen years old over there, we needed to start upgrading. As we started looking at this, all of our cameras in the town are fairly old and so, and have needed to be upgraded. So while we were looking at this, we wanted to look at it more comprehensively. Generally speaking, the way we do cameras, the police as public safety have been involved from where the camera locations are and monitoring and all of those kind of parts from the operations standpoint, we generally have taken care of providing the power and making sure the installation is appropriate as needed in that situation. So we've kind of had a joint venture on this. As we started looking at this, Captain Payne and I were meeting with different vendors. But we really focused with Siemens because they had a contract through Sourcewell that we could use where it was a publicly bid contract through Sourcewell. And so we could utilize that and then specifically tailor what we needed for the system and utilize the pricing that Sourcewell has for any of those specific things. We specifically looked at three different options. And those three different options were how it was, the data was stored and monitored. And basically, the one that you see before you was the cloud option where everything would go to the cloud and would be stored on the cloud. Then there was the other option, which was kind of stored on a server locally. And then, to be honest, there was a third one, which was kind of a hybrid between the two. So we looked at these options. And before I get too far into this, I think maybe if Captain Payne would talk about how you looked at which locations and what we did as far as that was concerned, maybe that would be really helpful in anything else that, you know.
So, excuse me, Kenny, who is the representative from Siemens, we went to fifteen sites. So the sites that you see weren't just, he's given a ballpark figure. We actually touched every site, and we were taking a look at the cameras that we currently have. And there's a lot of locations that were actually completely down. Also, like Director Stahl said, the technology that we currently have for their camera system, we're looking at about ten to fifteen, ten to fifteen years old. And some of the other issues are that they're kind of being stored right now, kind of like on the little mini data box that we have in each location. And I noticed we had several incidents that occurred with inside the town that I went to get pull data from the camera system, and the boxes that were storing the data were either were ruined due to the elements of the weather, such as heat and things of such. But we stuck with fifteen of fifteen sites. And all the sites, I think with the exception of the police department and the train station currently do not have cameras, I believe, correct? And hopefully.
All of the, yeah, those two don't. Everything else.
Everything else currently doesn't. I recall this project when it was done many years ago. It pretty much was online. For example, we had one camera system go down. They went online and ordered another, you know, box of four cameras. So you might have five or six different types of brands of, at different locations with different logins, different systems. And it would have made it very difficult if you were to go out there and try to pull that data from that system because one might be a, say, a brand A, then you're dealing with a brand B, then a brand C. And especially if a camera went down, like Director Stahl said, it's kind of hard to get those replacement cameras because they're so out of date, even after having them probably up and running for three or four years. I know we had trouble back then trying to get a replacement camera because they didn't make that certain model anymore, which did us no good.
I would also add that in a number of locations, especially here at Town Hall, we are greatly increasing the number of cameras so that we basically have three hundred and sixty-degree coverage around the outside of Town Hall. And we found that that's going to hopefully be helpful in the long run because of all the public events that we have here, making sure that we cover the parking lot and making sure that with the higher-end cameras that we're upgrading with, that we can make it so that these aren't just grainy, black and white videos. These are actually color, high, high-definition images, and so that we have this. As we went through this, we did use Sourcewell for the procurement methodology. As you can see, the original budget for this project was originally a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so we are going to fund this with additional ARPA money, but also with fund balance. The project to purchase and install all of the cameras that you saw before you is a total of four hundred and five thousand dollars off the top of my head. And then we have annual operating costs that are associated with storage on the cloud and, and providing the data to us on a, so that it's readily utilizable by the police. Because ultimately, that's the goal here is not only, it really is public safety, but also being able to use it if necessary in a court of law. So the idea here is, as you can see, there are operating costs with this, which will come out of the operating budget for each of the individual areas. And then the capital cost will be split with fund balance and ARPA funds with, with the lion's share of that being ARPA. So we bring this for you tonight. We believe this is a good project. We believe that it upgrades some very dated infrastructure, and we'd like to move forward with the purchase and would recommend such to the council. Do you have anything else you want to add?
One of the good things about this system is if we do have a camera that goes down, it's not like the current systems that we're currently working off of right now. Siemens has many vendors that we could choose select cameras from within their company, such as companies like, I don't know if anybody ever heard of Verkata, for example. Verkata was another company that I spoke with, and they're the proprietor of their own camera. So if we needed a camera, we would have to go back to Verkata and purchase another camera through them by using their camera. But with Siemens, they have many vendors available that we're allowed to select cameras from and get different rates on it.
All right, thank you. I will open the floor for council's questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Stahl, unlike the fire system, we were upgrading, but we had to use those parts because they were the only parts that were compatible with the fire system. So we are upgrading these cameras. Did we have three bids? It sounds like Captain Payne did speak to another agent. We were, we were not required to get three different bids for this?
We utilized Sourcewell, which we've utilized many times. And what Sourcewell does is they actually do this on a public bid basis. And so it is a, it used to be called the National Joint Purchasing Alliance, where they would do the bidding for you. And then they have pricing that is specific to the public bid that they put out. It's allowed under our charter. It is something that we use. So the pricing that was developed in this, in this specific situation was a bid-out pricing that Siemens had bid through the Sourcewell contract. And so we piggybacked with that.
So we weren't required to get three bids because of the?
Because of the Sourcewell contract was, was open, was a public bid, just like we had put it out to public bid. In this way, because we are so busy with so many things, we utilize Sourcewell as an opportunity because they do all of these things publicly as public bids, and we can use that. It would be like piggybacking on another governmental entity contract in this situation. So we have done this numerous times. It is accepted. It is accepted by the federal government, and Tom Himmler, our ARPA consultant, did sign off on this because he checked and verified back the Sourcewell contract.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Any other questions?
Yes. Okay, so I was curious about the same thing Councilwoman Bryant Ward was saying. And I think because this is a massive cost, right? Like, it's not, we're not looking at something that's completely funded by ARPA. We're having to put funds from other things towards it. And then the annual costs are significant as well. I've got nothing to compare it to. We have nothing to look at as far as the current. Can you give us some context as to what's our current annual cost? Because they broke it down with preventative maintenance as well as storage. So you've got two separate annual costs here, right? So what are we currently paying for our data system for those two items? And then I just have a hard time, I know you say Sourcewell, I hear it, but it's not, I mean, we're used to seeing multiple bids, right? And, and hearing from you about that. Let me stop, and then I'll ask my other questions. But what, what do we know about the preventative costs annually currently and the annual storage costs if there are any?
Let me address that in two ways.
Okay.
First, what we have today doesn't work.
Okay.
The storage is terrible at best. I, I think what Captain Payne indicated was absolutely the truth. He goes out there, it is stored onsite in a box that's at each location. There is no H V A C in there to keep it cool. Of course, this is electronic equipment that's out there in the atmosphere. And to be honest, a lot of the time, we can't retrieve the information. So to even put a comparable to what we have today with what we would have in this situation is not really apples to apples. It's more like an apples to.
Grapes, sure.
Pomegranate.
Do we, do we know, do we know the cost of the preventative or annual maintenance currently? Even though it doesn't work, right? So we're saying this is not a feasible option going forward. That's understood.
Right.
Right? So what is it currently costing us? And I don't know, Mr. Larson, if you have any.
To, to be honest, we have not put a lot of preventive maintenance in it because honestly, the system is antiquated. And so we have not been maintaining the systems today. Only four out of the nine cameras, for instance, at the wastewater treatment plant even work here at Town Hall. A lot of them don't even work. And so I would say that, yes, I would totally agree with you that the cost for the operating side of this is high. There's no doubt about that. But we're paying for data storage on the cloud, which is something we haven't had in the past. You know, we, we honestly, between Captain Payne and myself, we've put a lot of work into identifying the cameras, where they should go. We've tried to make this a very comprehensive package. It isn't cheap. There's no doubt about that. No technology today is. And everything, especially in the computer field and the electronics, it's expensive, and I grant you that.
Um, okay. So let's go back to the basics, just from my, from my understanding. These cameras exist at our, our structures, our property to allow for just a supervisory role, right? So we've got them at the wastewater treatment facility. We've got them at Tillman Lake. We've got them at the police department, and these, oh, no, so these are not just to replace old cameras.
We don't have cameras at the police department.
All right. So how many of these are new versus how many are replacing old?
So the new ones, I can tell you, will be the train station.
Okay.
Train museums, and it would be, I, I'm not sure. I believe it's only four cameras, maybe four or five going to the police department on the building because currently there's no cameras at the police department.
We certainly have added, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but we have certainly added a number of cameras here at Town Hall. I believe it's almost a hundred percent increase in the number of cameras here at Town Hall. Is that not correct?
There's a lot of cameras. There's a lot of blind spots on the grounds at Town Hall.
All right, so this is going to sound really stupid, but when we're talking about such large costs and we're adding new versus replacing old, that doesn't work, which is a major problem. What is the basis for adding the new? Are we trying to capture evidence? Are we trying to, what, what are we trying to do?
Well, I, I mean, I would just say that, to be honest, I, I think the whole idea here is security for our buildings and facilities. It is public safety, and it's also giving us evidence, if we need such, for prosecutorial use in, if, if we find that, that it, that becomes necessary in that situation, it becomes evidence. So I think it's, it's really threefold in that situation and not something that I would say is, you know, it, it comes at a cost. And as we've looked at all of these, you know, I've met with Verkata a number of times. We've looked at their options. Everyone has been in the same realm, and it's just a matter of what we choose to do. And we tried to do this comprehensively so that we would do it all at one time. And it does, it is, it is costly.
So, for example, we've got on here Site Nine Potomac Street Basketball Court.
Yes.
Right? And so that's, you know, were, were we hoping to have the purpose for a camera there, for example?
That was a specific request of the police chief. And I'm actually surprised the police chief isn't here today, but, you know, the bottom line here was, you know, this is a public safety request that he specifically requested that we put cameras. Even though we don't own those basketball courts, it was a, a public safety issue, and he wanted to have cameras over there. So we, we ran both power and data to that facility to be able to put cameras at that site. We set the pole, and so, you know, this was a matter of adding cameras over there. You know, th- these were all public safety requests. The ones for operations were the.
If you don't know, I don't need you to speculate. That's, if you don't know, that's okay.
That I don't know what?
Why there is a request for the basketball court. That's.
The basketball court exists today. That's existing.
Okay, okay. So, all right, so that's replacing an old.
Yes.
Okay.
As we indicated, there's only two locations that are new. One is the police station, and one is the train station. Those are the only two sites where we don't have cameras today.
Okay.
And the issues with the one, like, for example, the basketball court, the ones at Caroline Park, is that there's not a structure there in order.
To keep it.
To keep it. So these things are kind of, the, the data box is exposed to the elements. Now, it is enclosed, however, you know, we put a fan in there, the fans go out. And one of, one of the great things about the Siemens camera system is that alerts will be, will be notified when a camera goes down. You know, they'll be checking these things, and it's, it will kind of give us alert. And they'll be doing these things with us. It's difficult when you go out and you start checking these cameras, say, like, once a month or once every couple of months. And then when you actually need to pull data off of the, out of the camera system, that's when you realize that the cameras were down or the box has been fried. We've had several significant incidents inside the town in which we went to retrieve data from the camera systems in which several of the cases, we were able to pull data. But then we had a couple of major incidents that it would have been beneficial to have evidence if the, if the camera system was operational.
Yeah, I mean, if we paint them fifteen thousand dollars a year, you would, you would hope that they would put in that effort to, to make sure that they work every year.
Yeah, I know, and it's fifteen thousand. I believe it goes up five and a half percent each year.
Yeah. The last question I had, Director Stahl, was I thought one of the concerns about the fire systems previously was that we were kind of stuck with using, was it, was it Siemens that we used for that as well? And we had to kind of re-up basically because they were.
Proprietary.
Right. And, and we got stuck using the old software upgrading with the new or the old hardware upgrading with the new. Are we not concerned then again in this process, dealing with the same vendor, being locked in the same way as we were with that program?
Well, I think as, as Captain Payne pointed out, I think the, the, the better piece of this was that Siemens wasn't using proprietary technology throughout all of this. They're buying cameras that are multiple, from multiple different vendors. Their system interacts with multiple, and I thought, you know, from. And I thought, you know, from, at least from my personal standpoint, I thought that was the positive piece with going with the Siemens system was that you could interface with multiple different cameras, multiple different vendors. Whereas when you went with the company, the other one we had looked at was Verkata. And, you know, they used their specific system, and you had to go back and use Verkata cameras, Verkata data recorders, all of that stuff was Verkata. My personal feeling was that with using Siemens, it did give us a broader base. And yes, to be honest, all of you in in technology today, in so many systems, you do get locked in when you buy a system. And, you know, I'm facing that over there today on the you know, the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. We have Schneider technology for most of our 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 SCADA system and our PLCs over there. And we're trying to get it to talk to another another upgrade that has come in from Xylem. And trying to get the two to talk to one another is not real easy. And we're trying to get things programmed together to make that work. And that's, you know, that's true with with all technology today, that that these companies, as, you know, I'm sure everybody's aware, like with Microsoft and, you know, they they try and make it so that you end up having to buy Microsoft products because of Microsoft. All companies are doing that today. And so it does become very hard to to balance. And I I mean, I think that's just the nature of the technology industry.
Okay. Look, I appreciate you indulging me in my questions, because it's just a massive, it's a massive cost. It's a big project. You guys have worked really hard on it. And I appreciate you taking time with that. The last question I have on it is, so how are we going to pay for the, you know, basically in excess of 40 grand cost every year going forward? How are we, how is that going to be paid for out of our budget? We have
You may want to invite Director Larson to the table. She did include a memo. I just want to
Okay.
to point out that the funds that we're looking at utilizing to pay the additional capital expenditure of over four, a little over 405,000 will all be from ARPA. It will not be, it will be from, of course, the initial, we had $150,000 initially budgeted. And we will be taking from Enterprise Fund, ARPA, as well as the general fund.
Okay, that's the vision. That's fine.
But I understand your question, the rea, the reoccurring costs, if you will, which are included for three years as part of this request. And I think one of the questions is, you know, we talked about the high resolution of the cameras. Is there another option? Because, you know, the higher the resolution, the more data you're going to have to store. Are there other options as far as the resolution for a, maybe not something, the Hubble Telescope?
The things with the cameras are, when when you, when you have the camera sitting there and say it's at Will's Park, for example, and it's on the corner of the building, and you're trying to watch the playground. All that ties into the resolution with the camera powers pulled back, so it's
Mike spent a lot of time with getting working out.
Different pieces, they're just camera, you got a camera here that may be 1080 HP or whatever it may be. However, there's many different types of cameras, and that's what Kenny and I looked at, like, hey, you got this camera we could put here. So if you actually look at the breakdown, breakdown of every different, there's a lot of different cameras in the system because some are good for, like, say, 200 yards, some are good for, like, say, 500 feet. It just depends on exactly, what what coverage are you looking for? Like, what, with this camera here, what, what do you want to, what information are you trying to obtain? Because we all know with, like, Will's Park, for example, the park's kind of a little far away, swing sets are and everything. So we had to get a little better camera for that location because we needed more, you know, depth, go out deep to bring that information back. I can always reach back out to Kenny and find out. But we, the resolution was based on what we were actually trying to capture on our properties.
Okay, thanks.
So a couple of questions, kind of piggybacking on Councilman Challenger's. I did, I just went on to Siemens website this morning after I looked at it. And and my, my cursory glance, this is encompasses about 85 to 90 cameras total. Is that, does that sound about right?
I believe that's, I believe.
So it's not an insignificant number of cameras?
It's not 91.
Okay, so now, so I wasn't too far off. 10 terabytes of storage is $1,400 a month, according to their website. I don't know, I I, this is just back of the envelope kind of calculating. What are we really getting for 45 to $47,000 in cloud storage? Because that, for cloud storage, I mean, that seems very, very high for just quote unquote cloud storage. Because aren't we also purchasing cloud storage for the body cams for the police department as well? So is there any piggybacking on one versus the other? And and while you're, I don't need to know kind of right the second, but I guess my question is, how long are you storing this data for? Because security cameras, you would typically turn over every 30 days anyway. You would tape back over you, so that's, you know, you know, you you take Monday out and you put Tuesday's tape in, and then next week you start all over unless there's so 10 terabytes of storage is what my estimation was based on closed circuit TV. Is that, is that under, is that over?
Or it's going to be stored for 30 days. But also, the difference between the body cameras are, they may be on for, like, say, 10, 20, 30 minutes, depending on what kind of call they're on. And it's going to back right back up, you know, downloading to the server. The difference with the camera system is that you're going to have cars driving by. So it's going to be, it's going to be pulling in a lot of data from his car. So it's got a 30-day turnaround where it's going to store itself. And the cameras itself, especially with the issue at, for example, Potomac Street Basketball Courts. The camera itself is going to be automatically have internet that's going to shoot it directly from the camera.
So I guess my question is, how much storage? Have you figured out how much storage you need?
No, I have not forgotten how much storage.
I, like I said, back of the envelope calculation, it's about six terabytes. So I did 10 to give you room for growth. And and so I would, I would look at that number a little, a little closely. The basketball, I know there's ba, there's cameras, you said, at the basketball courts, but you you mentioned it a little bit ago that it's part of the community, the Potomac Street.
That's right.
So what happens when another neighborhood says we want cameras on our tennis courts or our playgrounds or?
Well, the
If it's the community, shouldn't the community be responsible for paying for the, I mean?
The basketball courts is owned by the apartment complex, and the town has an agreement. We leased that land, so it's a town park. So that's why we have cameras there.
Okay, fair enough. What's the ability to add or change these cameras as needed?
With the
With 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 this system that you're going, you know, because I can already see in a year from now, somebody's going to say, well, we need five cameras over here. And I, and I'm saying it because I'm, the train station was something that came up last Friday in a conversation as to when we were going to get cameras in there. So, you know, there's going to be another six months, a year from now, where somebody says we need three cameras for here. So what's the upgrade ability of this system?
I think it's, I think it's excellent myself. I mean, I think that's what, you know, we're trying to do here, is that we can then add on to it. We already have the cloud storage piece, and it would just be adding additional storage and and making the additional connections where necessary. Part of this, you know, to be honest, when I came here 16 years ago, we didn't have any. And, you know, we started putting cameras in. We we put the cameras here in Town Hall for the treasurer's office, and we had them, then they wanted to cover the front desk. And then we put the cameras out back. You know, we, when we did the first upgrade over at the wastewater treatment plant, we put cameras over there, both for security standpoint and also so that we could look at things if, you know, we got an emergency at the middle of the night, I want to see if things are running over or what happens, I can pull the cameras up and see what's going on. When we bought the Public Works Building down on 301, we put cameras in there just for security purposes, because we have such a lot of vehicles and assets, and it's kind of a little bit south of town. You know, we have gradually been adding more and more cameras as we go. Part of this, we did add, you know, about 100% additional cameras into this bid than what we actually have right now. There's, I would say we actually probably have 200% more cameras in this new bid versus what we had here at Town Hall, if I'm not mistaken. So I think the whole idea here was to literally upgrade our system, give us a modern, I think, uh, what would I say, technologically advanced system for today? And you know, can we go back here and eliminate cameras? Can we go back in and, you know, cut back on different pieces? I think the answer to that is sure, yes. But I don't think that we wanted to bring that to you today. I think the idea here was that we were bringing you what we felt made it good for the security standpoint, the public safety standpoint, and the ability to use the data for for backup.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I I had a couple of questions. Director Larson's memorandum was very helpful, but I just had a question at the, so the, the last part of the paragraph, read the next two years of storage management. And you give the numbers on any future service will be funded through operating revenue, taxes and service fees. So we don't, really don't have an estimate of what that will be in the future, right? I mean, it's just
I guessed about 50,000 and increases, yeah, and increases continuously. It's not like this is going to be ending. It's going to increase just like everything else that we do. And we're going to have to figure out how we're going to pay it out of the operating expense. Because once this capital projects in, you've got that ongoing operating expense.
And then I guess Director Stahl and Captain, Captain, so I I'm a little, still a bit fuzzy, but so these are Siemens system, but they, you say they can use other brand cameras? So then that that there's an assumption that they're compatible?
Yes.
So we don't have Microsoft here and Google there, and they don't talk to each other?
No, the the, all of the cameras will talk to one another, but they do have multiple vendors that they use for the cameras, and they all have the same ability to talk to one another.
And then, but more importantly, then you can, whoever operates it, you can download it from all camera, and it's a compatible video, or you can, it's usable from different
That's correct. And you can look at it over the internet. That's the whole idea here, is that you can pull it up and be able to look at it utilizing a password. As long as you Yeah.
And and then so thi- this hasn't really been looked at on a strategically comprehensive basis for what, I think, 15 years? Did I hear that?
I would say this, there really wasn't in the past a comprehensive look at this. This was a situation where under previous town management, the camera systems were put under the police. And the police had all the cameras except for Public Works and the treatment plant. Everything else was under the police. The only reason that operations got involved in any of it was just to provide the box, the power, those kind of things. But to be honest, and I would say this for both of us, I don't think either the police or the operations department looked at it comprehensively. We did not. And and We just kind of added as we went, you know, we'll put cameras over here, we'll put cameras over there.
And I appreciate that perspective, because that's frankly, some of my heartburn, is that, you know, this is what we it's passed, so we're trying to fix it now, but I I just wish we had done that many, many other years ago. So that's done, what's done is done. So I'm just trying to, trying to reinforce the idea of this should be a strategic process. It should be integrated, it should be holistic. So we're all talking, pardon my pun, they're all talking and we're working together not only now to fix the current system, but to look out in the future. And we have folks in charge or folks looking at it on an annual, but whatever you need to do to look at it, so we don't play catch up like this at a huge cost. That's my concern.
There really was no camera infrastructure setup whatsoever. And it basically was a box of cameras, and they were put up.
That's obvious.
So And what happened, if you remember, was Officer Maynard, who was a police officer, really kind of started it, because he was kind of an IT guy. He actually left the police force and went into IT work. And he just went around and installed all the cameras, even when we installed the ones at Public Works. Officer Maynard, you know, we paid him to put the cameras up. It really was just, okay, we're going to add this site. He went over and kind of looked at it and put the cameras up, right, Mike? I mean, as far as I recall. This was kind of a situation where there wasn't this strategic work together between operations and the police. When we did this, when we first started looking at this, and I was looking at it purely somewhat self-servingly for the operations, I think it made sense to work together. And so Mike and I worked together to kind of put this package together. I was looking at it from the operational side and looking at it from the power side and those kind of things of what we had to do. And Mike was looking at it from, you know, what he felt that we needed from the safety, security, and that standpoint.
I I just, I appreciate, again, I I I would just urge us to continue that type of thinking and so we don't keep playing catch up and incurring a lot of different costs. And then so this will be a a three-year contract?
Yes.
And then what happens after three days renewed, or what what what's the next after that?
Well, I I certainly think that my assumption is we would renew. I mean, that's, that's my assumption. And I mean, I think Karina's correct in that, that it is going to be an escalating cost. It is going to be something that we're going to have to
Pardon me?
We're going to have to understand that it's, it's an operating cost, which will add to rate. It will also add to operating costs on the general fund side as well.
I'm sure you were about to say
I was going to say, we're not going to spend half a million dollars on something and just use it for three years.
Correct.
This is an ongoing
Right, I'm just saying, again, part of a larger process.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, I have a couple of questions before I let Counsel take another bite at this apple here. It sounds like we do, and I agree, we do need, there's no doubt, we need to make sure all of our facilities are secure. So that's not even an issue with that. The procurement process that you went through, I know that is what is accepted, but I'm hearing from Counsel that it's kind of uneasy for us without the three bids. I know I can speak for myself, I definitely don't. That makes me feel, there's a lot of unanswered questions, like the storage that hasn't been calculated process, you know, for the long run. We're going from nine to 91 cameras. You're calling it an upgrade, but it's not. Because it's replacing those. So I'm going to, since I've heard from both of you, I'm going to do the third leg of this, and it's the finance part. Are there other options that we may have here? And then my second question is, I see where they're coming from, ARPA, and they're very general, saying from the enterprise fund and from the general fund, what is being cut? Because it's not just overall, we just don't have that. It's, that money has been allocated. So if you could just address those, please.
So where the funds are coming from, the enterprise funds is the MS4. And I got that number because that's how much of this project is for the enterprise fund. The remaining amount is general fund, would come from the general fund. And the general fund projects, again, this is a reallocation that will be proposed, is from the Dorchester project. is from the Dorchester project, um, that there was, I believe, 100,000 put there for the ARPA funds. And then, um, Charles Street, um, project. And I believe there was 125,000 that was originally budgeted for ARPA funds. And what was the second question?
Um, the, uh, second question is, are there other options out there that? My big concern is the fire alarm that we got, we had no other options. In order to make the fire alarms from Siemens work, we had to, we were stuck with them. Otherwise it would have been prohibitively expensive, if I recall. And because then they have you over a barrel. And, and I'm not saying that company, you know, just Siemens. A company has you over the barrel, which really limits us and it makes us have to use them. Just like we had to do with, um, I think Water Smart was the same, um, you know.
It happens in industries especially.
It's not my world, that's why I, you know, I, um, appreciate all of the hard work that you have done. But are there?
There are other options. They looked at the option that they thought was best for the town. I mean, they did talk about the other options, like the different storage options, um, the different, um, hosting worthy, um, being onsite or the cloud. There's always, they talked about the cameras, the type of cameras. So there's other options. It's just, that's their expertise and that's what they chose to present. I, from what I'm hearing, you guys want them to look at other options and present that? And that would be them going through and seeing what, where they could modify.
It may be that we do come back to this, but I personally would feel more comfortable seeing, I mean, 91 cameras is amazing, um, which means it needs storage for 91 cameras, which, um, thank you so much for the work that you've done on just calculating that, Councilman, uh, Winkler. But I am just a little, um, hesitant on that because it's not an upgrade, it's a replacement. So if we are doing a replacement, are they really giving us the best, best deal? Because you're already using them. We're only using nine cameras right now, and we're going to 91.
Oh, no, we're, we're probably, um, we're probably using close to 50, correct, Mike? If I'm not mistaken right now.
Where did we get the nine from?
That was just what we had. I, I mentioned nine at the wastewater treatment plant. There's nine cameras at the wastewater.
So we're doubling it.
Correct.
And, and are we replacing, let's just call it 50. Are we replacing all of those 50?
All 50.
So they're not an upgrade, it's a replacement. An upgrade to me.
Those are replacements.
And then we're adding.
And we're adding another.
Forty some odd, uh, more. And is it possible, um, also to go in phases? Is that something that we can do instead of doing all 91 for that? It, it sounds like because we have the found money for ARPA, but you're taking away from the Dorchester Community Center that, did you say MS4?
Yeah.
MS4 and the Charles Street revitalization project.
Reasons for this is trying to make sure we, um, use those funds in a timely manner. There are other options we could look at in reallocating to ensure we have the funds. Um, and I think this project, and there's a lot of projects you'll see when the budget comes to you, that you're going to have to consider and prioritize.
I think we definitely need to prioritize on certain things. But I, I, me personally, I feel a little uncomfortable, um, uh, saying yes to this $540,000 expense without seeing the other options, but I am just one vote, so. Thank you very.
And I think if you look at the, um, there were the three options that were given to us by Siemens. I believe that was part of the package that, um, we sent out that showed the three different options and what the funding was on each one of those options. I believe it was on page 31 of the Siemens proposal, where it showed the three different options, and then it was priced as such.
And that is just with that one company?
That's correct.
And that's what.
The, the real challenge becomes, and that's where it gets really, really tricky, is if we were going to go out and put this out to bid, then to be honest, we would have to hire a consultant to come in and write the package and make sure that the procurement package, because just knowing how we've done, it becomes a situation where you get apples to oranges to pears to, you know, all these different companies who are saying, well, we're, our system is going to work like this and we're going to do it this way. And so you always are trying to go back and compare and to make sure that what you're actually bidding is an apples to apples bid across the table to make sure that you're exactly correct. And to be honest, we don't have a permanent IT person who could really help with that on, on that end. And so to be honest.
Procurement person now, right? And wouldn't that be her, um, job to compare apples to apples now that, because, you know, a year ago we didn't, but now we have.
Yeah. So her position is to, um, take the information from the department's request. They give her all the technical, um, specs and she prepares the RFP or the RFB, whatever is the process that best fits the project and puts it out there. So she does work with the departments because they're the experts on it and she prepares the documents. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Larson, my only question is, I know when we did the budget, when we had the budget retreat, we had X amount of dollars in the ARPA fundings that we needed to spend, and we did not currently have a purpose for them. I understand the reallocation piece, and I think that there were some, um, ARPA funds in, on certain projects and they weren't using them. They weren't planning to use them, so we were going to reallocate those. Is this the situation for the reallocation from the enterprise fund and the general fund? How many, how much in ARPA funding, and this is, we're going into April, do we still have to identify projects for in order to use it before the end of the year?
So everything's been identified for. It's, the problem is, is it gonna, are we going to meet the timing requirement? Is it going to be spent by or obligated by the end of this year? And that's what we're facing is if it's not, we're going to use it somewhere else.
Okay.
Um, so that we can and we stay within those dates.
So you said, you said, if we still have to obligate. So that means we have monies that have not been designated for projects.
Well, no, we have a budget. So we have an ARPA budget that you guys approved. Obligation is based on the requirements that the, um, government's giving us, saying that you have to have a contract in place saying that these are going to be spent on this project. And you have to make sure that that project meets all the requirements for the ARPA funds.
Okay.
And I'd give you the example of the MS4 in that situation.
So let me just, one, one more question. So, so I'm clear, all of the ARPA money that we have has been earmarked for something, but it's not obligated because we don't have a contract in place.
Correct. And that's what this reallocation, that we're going to come to you to reallocate those funds so that we can utilize all those funds.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And I would just point out that one of the problems, for instance, like with the MS4 money, we're still in the permitting process for all of those projects. We're still working through those permits, and so we can't put it out to bid until we get the state permits. And the state keeps extending these permits farther and farther out. We have five of those major projects and we haven't been able to put them out to bid because we don't have the permits back from MDE yet. And it's, it's very difficult. And so we are trying to do some things to spend this money to ensure that we spend it. We're, we're looking at a number of different things to do from the operating budgets and, and transfer that cost to ensure that we spend every last dollar of ARPA funds before we lose it at the end of the year. We don't want to wait till December to start scurrying around trying to fund this. And we're working on that hard right now.
Just, I guess, an observation that I think Director Stoll, you said, we don't, does this suggest, at least to me, that we need to, as we go through the budget process, do we need a part-time or, or another IT consultant? Because it seems like we're getting ready to be overwhelmed. And so that troubles me a little bit. Just food for thought.
Who wants to answer that?
I know you don't want to answer it, but.
Maybe it's just a rhetorical question.
It is a rhetorical question, but it certainly seems to me that, you know, we're, we're playing catch up. And we're getting overwhelmed and it, it just seems to me like we're going to have a big problem. And, and again, in my view, we need to be proactive rather than reactive. And I know all this costs money. I get it.
And I agree with you. We've had several issues where if we had an onsite IT person, we could have resolved in a lot faster than what it was resolved in. Nobody's requested an IT person, but I'm more than willing to put it in the budget or put it under the. So actually, I'm going to give you guys the budget based on our current operations and anything, and then have you look at that and then add in what you want to add in, such as new positions, new benefits, capital assets. And that will be up to you guys to choose how, what you want to do and how you want to.
And, and then we could compare it with, with the staffing plan that we did several years ago as well, staffing needs.
Okay. Did you have something? Go ahead.
Uh, well, I'll piggyback on Councilman Jenkins. Yeah, I think it's, in this day and age, to not have a dedicated person for IT is, I mean, uh, that it's probably as much needed as, as a, 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 a thief of police. My questions would be, moving forward, would just be to definitively determine how much storage is required? And if there is any piggybacking that can be done with the stor- storage that you're already purchasing for the body cams?
Yeah, I would, I would, sir, I will take a look and I will contact Kenny from Siemens and find out from him if there are any other options, kind of get a breakdown, kind of see what a daily download, like from a camera system would be, how much is actually being uploaded and how much.
And if my, if my estimation of 10 is way off, it's, it's way, like I said, it's, I just, you know, Google's a wonderful thing, but it's also can be scary. The other thing on the maintenance, what all does that entail? Like, you know, if a camera goes down, do we call Siemens and say, hey, camera five is down, and are they there within 24 hours to put a new camera? Or is that, no, they walk away and, you know, what all are we getting for this, this?
So with the maintenance program, they're going to, they're going to know that the camera's going to go down, um, from day one.
So it's a monitoring.
Yeah, so they'll get out, they'll get an alert because it's part of the preventative maintenance. There is a five-year, um, warranty on the cameras, um, included in the pricing with the maintenance program. And there is a one-year warranty on the groundwork that was done by the company for the installation. So if there was.
Okay.
Your wiring or something, they're, they'll come out and they'll take care of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead and then. It's just one question. When we, um, we had the presentation last week, um, by the chief for the, um, cameras. He mentioned that there was an IT person that they were working with that would do that. So where is this IT person? What, what happened to that person?
IT person?
For the police department.
You guys.
Oh, so we, 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 what we have is, uh, we do have an IT consultant that we contract out who deals with our mobile, uh, camera trailer system that we purchased that deals with that, yes.
Just a.
It, it deals with, he deals with only with the mobile trailers that we have. He deals with other things as well, but as far as camera systems, he deals with our, uh, two, we have three mobile trailers. He dealt with the installation and getting the download and things like that.
The presentation, and we were talking about the IT and the up, the upgrades and this IT person was a part of that process. So.
The only thing I could think of, and I can find it from the chief, as far as with our IT consultant and our cameras, the only thing that I could tell you, I, I believe it might have been helping with the body worn camera trip stuff and the mobile camera.
It was the body worn. We weren't talking about the trailers. We were talking about the body.
Body camera. Sorry, I apologize.
No worries.
Uh, so has the attorney looked at this contract? Because it is, I mean, just looking at, starting with, uh, page 28, it's very legalese and it's talking about Siemens will come out for, in a reasonable time, reasonable is very vague. So has the attorney had, put eyes on this yet? Not the, um, actual proposal, but the, they call it the project's business standard terms and conditions and their preamble and the definition and all that they are contracted out to do.
Yeah, I, yeah, I do not recall that the attorney has reviewed this. Uh, one thing is it's, you know, it's, uh, Sourcewell, as you say, so it's pretty well vetted. Uh, we can have the attorney review it if you would like. It will unfortunately be in the queue behind a lot of other things.
Uh, I'm just, well, I, I don't like the terms reasonable because that's very vague. What's reasonable and they're putting in acts of God, and that was just me perusing it yesterday and, and today. But, um, the other thing is, uh, tonight you're looking for, I mean, there's not an, a sense of urgency that it has to be done tomorrow. It's got to be done. And sooner than later is probably a good phrase to use, but it's not like we have a bid that's going to go, um, bad tomorrow. Is that correct?
Well, let me explain that the, uh, pricing is good for 30 days.
Okay.
So if you look at the contract, it's good for 30 days. And it has been renewed a number of times because we had other pieces that we had to get in here. So I just want you to understand that it could come back and change. Um, we have been extending him out farther and farther and farther in this. You know, we, we did have, um, our ARPA consultant vet the Sourcewell contract to verify back that it had been publicly bid and all of those. So he did go back and do all of that for us. He did, uh, ensure that it was going to meet the federal guidelines for spending the ARPA money. Uh, the other thing is too, is that there is a deadline, uh, for spending these monies as December 31.
Oh.
And so.
That's obligation. We have to have it obligated.
We have to have it signed contract by the end of the year. And we just have to be careful that we don't do all of these, you know, in December because we're going to be scurrying around, you know, trying to get dates and, and times and.
And I love the, um, I love the questions that came from, um, the DA. I mean, they're all great, engaging questions. And it looks like it was delivered on March 5th, so we have at least until April 4th. That would be 30 days and we have a meeting next week. Um, and with that information, I mean, I, I know, uh, Captain Payne, you were going to gather some information that, uh, Councilman Winkler, um, asked. So, uh, Brent, would it be okay if it is the will of the council to, um, wait to make this, uh, legislation to gather, uh, more information and bring it back? If they're, if they can next week, if not the first of our first meeting in April, if you can extend that contract so we can make an informed decision?
Yeah, I mean, it's, the will of the council is the will of the council and that's what we'll do. Uh, you know, I don't know how quickly we'll be able to turn around and whether we'll be ready for next week, but the ninth may be more realistic. But if by any means we can, uh, get it on the agenda for next week, we will do that.
I, Bernard, I won't be here next week.
Yeah, and Bobby will not be here next week. Uh, we were looking at doing, potentially doing an actual work session on the ninth. I know Karina has some items, uh, I think it's the, the general fund, the general fund budget on the ninth, so not do a formal, uh, meeting, but a, once again, a work session where we could discuss that in work session as well as, um, some other items that we'll get to later when we talk about the, uh, town council agenda requests.
And I see that there's a couple of hands, but I, I have my cheater glasses, not my long distance glasses. So I think Michelle's, uh, has a question. Michelle?
Um, I just wanted to answer two questions. First was Councilwoman Bryant Ward. You are correct, we do contract, um, with a gentleman that works for the Sheriff's Department doing their IT work, Mr. Crehan. He assists with the, um, with the police department, especially since they have a lot of confidential things that, um, need to be kept confidential. Councilman Jenkins' question about an, a dedicated IT person. There is a, a generalist IT person in the, um, Paylocity stu- or the, the pay study that was done several, two or three years ago. Um, it was a generalist that with the problems that we have been having, they wouldn't have been able to help anyway. But now that we are getting more sophisticated, we would need to create a new job description for somebody with, uh, much higher educational level than what we had in the pay study.
Thank you.
And I would also add to that. And I would also add to that, Michelle, you know, just like we do with Dregos, Tomaskiu Alario over at the plant. He, he works for McCrone, but he is our IT consultant for the wastewater treatment plant and the water systems and does a lot of programming for us over there, but has to work with Data Prize as well. So like when we lost the servers over there, Dregos and Data Prize were working together, you know, to try and solve that, that issue. So it, it, we, we both do. I mean, the police do that for their specialty people. We do that over public works as well.
We had an issue today with, um, the GIS being down.
Right.
We have a GIS specialist that we work with, with Data Prize to get that back up today. So there's all kinds out there.
So in light of the conversation today, Councilman Winkler, what would you like to do?
I would certainly like to get some additional information to determine the best course of action. I, I don't think there's any questions to the need. But given the scope and the size of the contract, I think it warrants a, a, a sharp pencil.
A Councilman Challenger?
I, I'm open to taking another look at it, uh, more for it than against it. I think it's really important that we have projects that are ripe. So this meets that criteria. Uh, I'm, I just would like to see a little bit more, just due to the nature and scope. That's it. I, I appreciate all the work you've done on it so far.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
I concur with, um, Councilman Winkler and Jenkins. I would just like to see that we did do our due diligence. I get it that Sourcewell vetted it and everything, but typically we are able to see the comparative lines and say yes, no. And I know that Seaman gave us a comparison, but it's their comparison. And I just would like to see, you know, it broken down by somebody else.
Councilman Jenkins?
I would concur with the comments made, uh, and I, I would again, just, um, appreciate, as a mayor said, the opportunity to have a dialogue and discussion about a needed project, but also the, the issue of again, looking at this from a comprehensive holistic perspective now and in the future on this and other topics, but more information. Thank you.
So Mr. Manuel, it seems that the consensus of the council is to, um, have more information provided. So can we, um, get that in the queue and we will have, um, we'll see that at a future date. But as we all said, thank you so much for your hard work and, um, really doing your due diligence, uh, on this and this, um, we'll see it again.
And I would just suggest, if I could, that the, in order to bid this out, which I think is what I'm hearing.
We just want more information on like the storage and, um, the comparison. What are you doing? What is, what is now, where we're going with that? It might not need a bid out. We just need more information to say.
I hear you. Okay. Just want to make sure.
And if Sourcewell did that, maybe perhaps they can give us some comparative data.
Absolutely. They, because they're the ones that you did say, um, they researched that. So they probably have that data. Wonderful. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Oh, wait, that was a very robust conversation. We are on to town owned properties, Mr. Manuel.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, I put a, an exhibit at your desk, uh, which highlights, we'll call it two pockets of town owned property. Uh, we'll talk about the first being just east of Town Hall adjoining our parking lot. Currently occupied with a tenant. But as you will notice, our, our parking is becoming limited here at Town Hall. And we, our plan, and when that property was purchased, it was to expand the town's parking lot. So that is one item in, uh, itself. And then we have the three parcels that of course are at the corner of St. Mary's Avenue and Queen Anne Street. Their residential uses. I think Kelly will pull up the exhibit. Maybe. And we have one renter who just won't leave. And then we have two, uh, two houses that are not occupied. We had deferred some maintenance on those houses because the attention was originally, it was purchased, uh, by the town, as a potential location for the future library, which obviously did not transpire. But at this time, you know, we would like to sort of feel out council, do we want to put people back in there? With that deferred maintenance, for example, I believe 118 Bobby would be better apt at speaking to it than I, but I think we're probably in need of a roof, uh, or a new roof on that, uh, structure. Uh, and needless to say, one of the concerns we have is that if we do, and when we expand to our parking lot to the rear here, we lose an event space, so to speak. A lot of the town events are, they use that green, uh, adjacent to the rental property, uh, to house everything from inflatables to vendors. Uh, you know, we have our, what our Friday night market first of the month, uh, in that area. So I've talked, I've spoken with, if the intention is for the three properties to, um, you know, really take a hard look and determine whether we want to, maybe look at future uses for that. I've spoken with, uh, Mead and Hunt and they've done a proposal. It would be less than $10,000 just to come back with ideas. One, a design layout for the parking lot and two, uh, how we could utilize that space over, uh, the three house pod, if you will. You know, one, uh, in a conversation with the county administrator, acting county administrator, uh, they are really looking to expand some of their facilities. And without saying it, they, you know, our farmer's market is currently over in the town's, in the county's parking lot. And depending on where they relocate some facilities or for lay down areas, that could impact our, our farmer's market in the future. And I'm not talking about this year, but in the future. So it may be an, a benefit to us to maybe consider this as a relocation of the farmer's market as well. One, to get it what I like to call, um, south of Charles Street where, you know, we have a lot of businesses. So we could generate, um, foot traffic in this area of town. So I think that would be a benefit. And then also it would be on property owned by the town, uh, so that we would have more control over that since, you know, in theory it is, you know, it's the town of La Plata Farmer's Market. So without having heard from you, I just wanted to make that proposal is that, you know, uh, working with Mead and Hunt, uh, to come back with a sort of, and it would be elevation showing you what it could look like, uh, things of that nature. I've got the specifics uh, from within the proposal, which would bring a review and, uh, of course documents preparing aerial base mapping, identify site programming requirements, which would be with staff. It would be Kelly. It would be Colleen. Also, uh, as I said, prepare concept site plan, and create illustrative plan renderings, which would give you sort of help you, help the town sort of visualize what that would look like as it fits into the streetscape, uh, which is, you know, very prominent corner of town. So we do want to do it right. And also, you know, they would project manage, but it came in just under $10,000 is what they, which would not require your approval. I just wanted to make sure I was not off track and it was the will of the council that we sort of proceed because we would then, you know, incorporate this into our capital improvement project. Or capital improvement plan, excuse me, not private, specific projects within the plan so that we can then project out sort of costs and how we would pay for that in future years.
Thank you for that. I really do like that idea of, um, exploring that. Uh, one thing that I know that has been brought up to you in the interim, and I don't know what it looks like and if you've explored it even more is that the police were looking at maybe occupying one of the, um, empty houses for overflow because they are busting out of there and maybe having, uh, you know, uh, one of their departments over there. In the meantime, I mean, it's a, it's a Band-Aid for sure, but it does give them some breathing room on that. And the, um, the idea of, I know that this was a hot commodity, this, um, property was a hot commodity a few years ago, wanting to have more apartments there, uh, because it is zoned commercial, if I, uh, recall. I love the, the idea of looking at different things. And if there could be more, since we are a sustainable community, a Maryland's first bird city community, we are a B true, B, um, city and a tree city. It would be nice to have a little more green space too, if that is something that, um, they explore as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, and just, um, piggybacking off of what the mayor's saying, we also are looking at the fact that the staff is not going to have much space if we continue to add staff to this, um, building. Is there an opportunity to look at a place for the additional staff or moving a department out of there? I know at one point we said, when we build a new police station, when we build a new police station, we could move a department down there. But, you know, I don't think that, you know, we can continue to pile them on top of each other in piecemeal spaces. So just something to consider when you're looking at it as well.
Yes, yes. And we have thought about that. And, uh, you know, we even evaluated the third floor in this facility. It would be okay for office space, but not for meeting space, just because there's only one point of ingress and egress to the third floor. Uh, as far as a staircase, we do have the elevator, but in times of fire, you do not want a lot of people in that third floor. So there's potential for office space there. Uh, Mayor, to your point, yeah, but three, God, I can't even remember the address. Is it 305 or 302? I mean, it could probably be the facility that would be most suitable. I just have to have a, sort of an architect evaluated for ADA compliance because it is a split foyer, which typically means elevation changes. So it may be problematic. Uh, there may be other solutions that I'm sort of experimenting or experimenting. I'm not a scientist. Evaluating, uh, so I, we, we can talk about that also. But Councilwoman Bryant Ward, yes, that is something that, and you know, as you said, the police station would be a possibility. When is the question? And does it match our timeline? So, uh, those are all things that we're taking into consideration and evaluating.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Manuel. I, I certainly would concur, uh, looking at the properties and I, I'm intrigued by the idea of the farmer's market that that, because I've heard folks in the community talk about that. And I do know that the, from past experiences that the, um, although I do respect the, um, current location with the county can be at times a little, let's just say conflicted. And I'll leave it at that. Having said that though, and, and don't want to prejudge anything, I, my only pause would be I, from a general perspective, and I think they talked about earlier about sustainability, I, I would hope that we would, um, try to minimize more parking. Because of, not only because of stronger management issues and impervious services, but if you were to go look at an aerial photography of La Plata, you would not believe how much of our area is, is devoted to cars and parking. And so I would just throw that out there as something to, to consider, knowing that we are car dependent, but from my perspective, uh, we have more than sufficient parking areas in the town. And so I would just ask that as a consideration. And there's a growing movement across the country to, to either do away with parking requirements or to minimize, do away with them. Because if, if you look at an aerial photography of La Plata, it is overwhelming what we devote to cars versus people. So thank you for bringing this up and I certainly encourage, uh, looking at these processes. Thank you.
Yes, and I, I do agree with you. I've looked at that area and I see a lot of parking available. Unfortunately, a lot of it's on private property and restricted use. You know, for our parking lot, we would of course control that and we can have, you know, we may not have as many spaces, but we'll have green islands where we could maybe do buyer retention within those islands. Stormwater is a little bit of a challenge here. If you ever go in the parking lot after it rains. But I think there, you know, that now's the time to look at it, even if we do not, uh, you know, one of the things that my question to council is, do we want to put people back in those houses? You know, if we go through this exercise, we're still a year and some change out before, uh, we're going to be in a position to act, which means have money, appropriated for, for these types of uses. Uh, but yeah, I do, I do recognize that, you know, it's one of the complexities of downtowns is everyone wants to park in front of where they are going. And, you know, they'll walk a half a mile from, in a Walmart parking lot, but they want to be parked right in front of a local business. So proximity, and I think that's something that the town can maybe really work to in the future is trying to get some of these property owners with large surface area lots to come together. And I've done a project like similar to this in the past. And it came down to stormwater that their give was the town gave them stormwater management. So we did the stormwater management. They shared the parking and you may had to designate a space or so. But it was of a direct benefit to the downtown as a whole because it freed up and made a public parking lot where you could then wayfind to direct people to that parking. And businesses saw an increase of, uh, foot traffic just because people could figure out where to go and how to get there. So I do, I do take your comment and understand where you're coming from completely.
Thank you.
Councilman Challenger?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Manuel. Um, this is presumed that Mead and Hunt would use our comprehensive plan as to what to look at, right? For usage of these three lots plus our adjacent lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, any other comments? Thank you for bringing that, uh, to our attention. That brings us next down to matters of information with the council agenda. I can request update and that's you again.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Town Council. I also placed at your dais a sort of checklist. And once again, this may be better. I know we've talked about trying to go back to work sessions, but, um, you know, this is the, and I think last time we talked about this and I was a bit embarrassed that I did not know of all the requests that Councilman Jenkins had made and I apologize for that. Uh, but I think I have them compiled here. So one thing would be to check the list. Another thing would be at a future meeting prioritizing these. You know, some of them are easy, you know, the pine grove and the adequate public health facilities basically means that we just send an email and make a request for them to provide dates that they would be available. Uh, some of them are a little more, um, comprehensive, such as the Main Street La Plata Town Center Corporation status process. That's, I don't know if there's enough hours in the day to, to talk about where we could or where we want to go, uh, in that direction. Dorchester Community Center status, like I say, I can speak anytime to the status of the hard facility as far as the 501 C3. That's someone else. Comprehensive plan implementation prog- progress. Uh, Ms. Harrington has put together a nice, I guess spreadsheet is what you would call it. And it is on the planning commission site. Now we need to sort of go in and provide specifics within that, uh, area. And then some of the items, uh, cyber briefing, obviously that was a while ago. Bruce provided us with an update as well as the discussion on, uh, water. But even though I have indicated them as closed and I haven't filled, completely filled this out, but you know, they are ongoing. So it may be closed for now, but it's something that we will continue. We didn't stop doing cybersecurity after we updated council, but, uh, we will continue to work, uh, in that direction.
And thank you for having an open door policy too for us. If, um, any of us want to come in and discuss this, I appreciate you letting us hear your updates one on one. So I encourage counsel too, uh, his door is always open. Uh, sometimes he closes it right when I'm coming by. I don't understand that, but.
Guilty as charged.
No, but I, I appreciate that very much. So, um, if we ever have any questions, you know, please, uh, um, ask or stop by and see. And, and, and thank you for this. I appreciate this so that, um, we know where we're.
I think we are, yeah, the. I think we are, you know, the more and more I come back to it, I think our meeting of April 9th will probably be a work session. So maybe something that we put this on the agenda so we can prioritize. As well as I know from a previous discussion, I believe during the rules of procedure, I heard, what I heard was, you know, we want a more fluid bringing topics to be discussed. So maybe at that time, because Mayor James, I think you remember back before I got here, there was probably a three page list that I don't know if it was during the pandemic sort of went away. And then we just never got back to that. So we can sort of reconcile with that list and see what items may be still outstanding and sort of add to this and then format it and then track it is the most important thing and program it. Get these items on future agendas. I think after July 1, obviously the budget will be complete and we are talking about going more to a the, you know, the second Tuesday of the month being a work session with the fourth Tuesday of the month being a business meeting. So I think we will sort of see an improvement in our workflow as a result of that.
And I think we tried, you know, eliminating the work session because we had so many 911 kind of things that had to be addressed right there to the special meetings. So I do really like the idea of having the list again and having council prioritize it because what might be important to one may, you know, may take a backseat to someone else. So we can get the majority of that there, you know, the consensus there. So thank you. Councilman Jenkins?
Thanks again, Mr. Manuel. Thanks for bringing this forward and, and you mentioned appropriately about the gap issue. And it's not closed because it's not, and we all know that. And it's particularly interesting. I think last, a couple of weeks ago at the county commissioner meeting, they had a, a presentation of federal funds they're seeking with respect to water. Okay, one is, I forget, I think I sent them to you and also Director Stahl. And, and I just found it odd that they, they wanted federal earmarking for water supply, but they don't bother to talk to us or include us because at the end of the day, we all need water. So, so I'm, I'm glad that this is not going to be quote closed because that was, I, I found that to be different. So I, from my perspective, that's very important. Thank you.
I will change the terminology to ongoing.
There you go. Addressed. It's been addressed and ongoing. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much. That'll bring us to legislation for ordinance 24-04 official zoning map, the first reading for introduction.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, an ordinance concerning official, official zoning map update for the purpose of updating the official zoning map of La Plata, Maryland, including the annexation of the villages of Rosewick, The Hub and Hawthorne Yards and all matters generally relating there too.
Thank you very much. And we will not be reading resolution or addressing resolution 24-07 tonight. We will see how that goes in the next future, in the future meetings. That brings us to new business, the commission reports, Councilman Winkler.
Okay. Nothing too exciting from the design review board. Oriole Lane, the developer of Osprey Property Company for Oriole Lane Apartments came and addressed some concerns regarding some color schemes, design schemes and screening. So we look forward to them coming back. They, they are very responsive to requests for improving and blending into the existing area. And I think they've, they've responded and very well to that. The Historic Preservation Commission, we met on Friday and to our earlier discussion about security cameras, that was one of the biggest concerns is because of some break-ins at the train museum and to make sure that, or, or damage to the, the train museum. And we're looking at some alternatives until we can figure out the security camera situation. We're going to look to some, some, maybe some in-house opportunities or in-house solutions. We will have a schedule put forth for when the train museum will be open for various La Plata days and, and it looks like it's going to be for future reference, just about the last Saturday of every month. So put that on your calendar. Did have a group of homeschool kids that came out. And, and according to reports was thoroughly enjoyed seeing an old train station and it, it is a worthwhile endeavor. Aside from that, that's really it that I like. Oh, actually no, let me, let me backtrack. We are adding, we had a presentation from Mr. Turner Coggins and Ms. Gloria Jefferson from Willing Helpers Hall. And that is on the next on the agenda. The plaque for the, for the jail has been ordered. So we're moving on to the next thing and, and looking to establish a plaque for Willing Helpers Hall and Willing Helpers Society and the significant contributions that they have made to the town over the years and continue to make. So as soon as we have some more information, I'll share that as well.
Thank you so much. Councilman Challenger?
Next purification meeting is on the 25th of this month. So I will have an update for you all after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
No update.
Thank you very much. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. Two issue, two reports. One, the Park and Recreation Commission will be meeting in, in April. We didn't have a meeting this month in March. And then the Tri, to the Tri County Council, there's a bicycle infrastructure advisory committee called the BAC, which I'm the current chair. We meet quarterly and we met this past Wednesday, the 14th. And we discussed and adopted all the pedestrians, cycling, other related projects priorities from each of the three counties, including the town of La Plata. So I appreciate Director Harrington providing that to them as well. And so that was agreed to. And I actually signed the letter, which now goes to the full council and then up to the state. So that's an ongoing project and an ongoing process for us as well. And also we're working through the committee, we're looking at, in fact, we're in the process now of obtaining funding from the Tri County Council to hire an intern from St. Mary's College that will be working through the council and working, Tri County Council, and working with all three county GIS to map all the existing hiker biker trails, whatever, to create like a regional system. And then from that, we hope to then be able to go back and do what, what they would call a gap analysis to see what we need in the future. So look forward to that. Thank you. Subject to questions, that's, that's my report.
Thank you very much. And mine is first of all, happy first day of spring. So that's exciting. Maybe we're away from the, the snow and the cold, although seemed a little bit chillier today than what I was used to yesterday. April 1st, we will have ice cream with the Easter bunny. So that will be here at Town Hall. This morning, I got a last minute request yesterday or the day before that I was alerted that Congressman Hoyer was coming down here to tour Alpass. And I had 10 minutes to spare because I was out of town and landed this morning. So I was able to go down there and tour with Congressman Hoyer, the Alpass. And he was very pleased with aesthetically what it looks like. And of course, that there is a behavioral health facility that will address the needs of so many that are in Southern Maryland. So he spent about an hour and a half with the CEO and CFO over there getting a nice tour. And then I have two, two of our residents that I would like to recognize. One is an artist that is a, currently a student at the Maryland Institute College of Art in Baltimore, where he is working on a double major in illustration and game design. His name is John Dale Haviar. He is in an upcoming publication of a Writers of the Future. It's the 40th anniversary of this contest. And he was one of 12 illustrators selected nationally in this annual writers and illustrators of future contests, which seeks to cultivate and support new and emerging professional science fiction and fantasy writers and illustrators, according to the contest's website. And he was featured in the February 7th, Southern Maryland News. But that he will be featured in this book. So La Plata resident. And then yesterday, one of our residents turned 100 years old. Ms. Jones. And I, I've gotten this information, so I'm going to just use her last name because I did not get permission to give all of the biography. But she has had such an amazing, amazing life. And she says that she gives all praise to God for her long and happy life. So happy birthday, Ms. Jones, on your 100th year of living in this great world. So with that, that's the end of my report, but don't go anywhere yet. We do have a reason to go into closed session and I will entertain a motion from the dais to go into closed session.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we go into closed session according to statutory authority to closed session subsection 3-305b three to consider the acquisition of real property for public purpose and matters directly related to the acquisition. Topic, property purchase, forest conservation.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Director Phipps, could you please give a roll call as to whether yea or nay about going into closed session?
On the issue of voting to go into closed session, Mayor James?
Yay.
Councilman Winkler?
Yay.
And Councilman Challenger?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yay.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yay.
Thank you very much. So we will immediately be going into closed session after I adjourn. And with that, at 7:41, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you so much.